Good evening, Dr. Burnham.
Evening.
Mr. Cassidy, I've made you a co-host so that you can help admit folks from the waiting room as needed.
It would be my honor to do that. Do you want me to take that responsibility as soon as the meeting starts?
No, I don't think, you know, only when I read my my part of the script to open the meeting or when I'm doing my superintendent's report, usually usually a little bit into the meeting, it really slows down.
Okay. No problem.
I'm actually gonna go grab something off the printer, so if you can admit while I'm away.
You still at work?
Yeah.
Dr. Burnham, you have that PowerPoint?
The budget slides?
Yep.
Yes.
I can speak on the budget transfers.
Okay.
Hello. I'm just checking to see if all the school committee is here, Carol, Brian, Laura, we are all here. Dr. Burnham, if you think we're ready. Yes.
Yeah.
All right. It is seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order and before we begin, I will turn it over to Dr. Burnham to confirm member access.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, the superintendent of schools. I'll do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Wendy Bertrand.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Carol Eschambo.
Yes.
Secretary Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
And I don't believe we have a student rep with us this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Lunenburg High School principal, Mr. Rob McGrath.
Yes.
Our director of facilities and grounds, Mr. John Londa.
Yes.
Lunenburg High School math teacher and department head, Ms. Jen Miller.
Yes.
Our school social worker, Ms. Jamie Mallett.
Yes.
And our school adjustment counselor, Jen Fletcher.
Yes.
I think that's everybody, so I'll turn that back over to you now, Mrs. Bertrand.
Thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel at a later time, and this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website COVID-19 Information Center, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public body entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app as posted on the town website identifying how it may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that unable to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effect clear conduct of our business and to ensure meeting minutes. I, Wendy Bertrand, chair, will each speak agenda. After they can their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak in a way that helps generate clear and accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And for items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. I will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses, and each will be afforded up to three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted via roll call vote. All right. The first item on our agenda is a chair's report, and I do not have a specific chair's report this evening. So we'll move on to public comment regarding agenda items. So this is, this public comment would be related to anything on tonight's agenda specifically. So I'm scrolling through, looking for any hands raised. I'm not seeing any.
Nor am I.
Okay. One more quick scroll. All right then, I will move on to our first item tonight, which is a presentation on the roles and needs of counseling.
So at this time, I would invite our school social worker, Jamie Millet, and our school adjustment counselor, Jen Fletcher, to screen share their presentation on counseling in schools today.
All right, let me know when you can see this.
You got it.
I can't take credit for this. I cannot take credit for this. This is all Jen with this presentation. Thanks for having us back. It's good to see everybody, or, you know, see you through Zoom anyways. We wanted to come back and, you know, I've been bragging so much about this awesome adjustment counselor we got to take on this year, and Jen's here with me tonight, which is awesome. And we're just gonna give a brief presentation around roles of school counselors. I mean, I feel like you guys have heard my presentations and the need for behavioral health in our schools is so significant. And I'm so psyched that we were able to take Jen on this year. Jen actually came on and covered my maternity leave for the fall. And then we were able to use some grant money to keep her around for the year. So we're hoping, you know, budget-wise, it works out and we can, we can keep another position available in the school districts. I do think it's really valuable for our students. Now, I know you guys have heard me present a bunch, and I guess I've never really explained what my license is, and, you know, Jen and I wanted to take a moment just to explain what the heck an adjustment counselor is, because I think that there's not a lot of clarity and, you know, people hear social worker, and I think there's a lot of different perceptions on what that means. You know, I often get asked, do I work with adoptive kids? Do I work for DCF? You know, there's just a lot of misinformation. You know, when I, when I go in and I do some work with Mary Foyle's 10th grade English class, we get to talk about this a little bit, which is really cool, because students don't know either. So I'm actually, I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker, and I hold a state license in Massachusetts. But I'm also a DESI licensed adjustment counselor slash social worker, so they kind of lump them together with DESI. And how I managed to, you know, navigate into this license was, you know, I got an MSW, a master's in social work through Simmons, did a lot of community outreach work, and then landed in the school systems and been here now in Lunenburg for seven years. Now Jen has a little bit different title, but essentially it's the same role. We just hold a different state licensure. So we both are in this position where we hold a license through DESI, but we also hold a state license, which gives us the ability to also work outpatient and, you know, bill insurance and do those sorts of things. But the real, the key, I guess, difference between a school counselor and adjustment counselor slash social worker is this license is really dedicated for those who hold the independent license that Jen and I do in the state, but also it's dedicated to addressing more mental health needs through evidence-based interventions with students. So I'll turn it over to Jen and let her introduce herself and.
Yeah. Hey, guys. My name is Jen Fletcher. Thanks for having us. I hold what's called a license in mental health counseling, so that's a master's in counseling psychology. And then to get that license, I had to do two years outpatient basis under a supervisor in order then to get that license to bill insurance. So I was in the crisis world for about 10 years doing crisis assessments, and then went back to DESI and got my adjustment counseling license after doing an internship in the schools. So it's kind of a backwards way into the schools, but it's nice because I have that dual licensure that Jamie has too. It's more clinically based. So a lot of outpatient counseling work and partial hospitalization work is in my background, so that means groups, evidence-based groups, therapeutic groups, and also individual counseling. And we kind of wanted to talk about the different tiers of supports we have built in the schools. So I'll let Jamie start.
So I know you guys have seen this triangle a million times, probably in every presentation I give, but we wanted to break it down. And in terms of how we work, you know, with other school counselors, with guidance counselors, with school counselors, we really all work in conjunction to be meeting the needs of our students from a multi-tiered level. So the tier one, that's the universal supports that are in place for every single student. That's really the SEL best practice day-to-day in the classroom. I know my last presentation back in December, I popped up a quick slide about the CASL standards. I won't get into that tonight, because we've got a lot on the agenda, but if anyone wants to go home and Google CASL SEL standards, those are the things. You know, it's kids being able to work collaboratively in groups, having self-awareness. You know, those sorts of things, active listening skills. Those are things that are built in day, day, every single day in the classroom, you know, whether it's doing a group project in a science classroom or it's doing something a little bit more centered around like emotional identification and like a morning meeting at the primary elementary school. Those are all kind of examples of that SEL best practice in the day-to-day classroom, and really the teachers are the stakeholders. Us as school counselors, you know, whether it's a guidance for a school adjustment or social worker, you know, we work in conjunction with them, you know, we kind of coach them and help, you know, provide information and just examples of what they can be doing day-to-day to help support students. Other examples are the universal screeners that I've talked about. We did just run them over at the high school, grades nine through 12. I'll be coming back at some point once I'm able to get all that data collected and bring back some information to y'all, hopefully in, you know, a couple of months. The behavioral health support teams that we've also talked about in terms of our reopening planning. Jen runs those meetings at primary and elementary, and I run them at the middle and high school level. And those are those groups that teachers can refer students to if they have any behavioral health concerns. And then we meet as a group, and that is involved with me, school psychs, guidance, admin. You know, we bring in other professionals as well, if we need the BCBA or school nurse, you know, other stakeholders that are working with the student to figure out what, what they need, and then that kind of transitions them up the triangle to what Jen's gonna talk about with this tier two and one intervention.
Yeah, so the tier two support is more, it's really targeted, shorter-term evidence-based treatment. So this is a short-term therapy group. So it could be a group on how to reduce anxiety, different coping strategies, or it could even be something like individual check-ins with the student that might be struggling right now. And then those are really kind of short-term rolling groups. That's my idea of this, and that's we work in conjunction with the school counselors to put those together as well. The next level up from that is tier three. So this is the most intensive and individualized supports we offer students. So these are the students that have counseling support on their IEP grids and longer-term clinical support in the schools these students need. We can also work with families in this tier to secure outside agency involvement if needed. We conduct safety assessments if needed. If a crisis happens at the school, we can conduct the safety assessments in the tier three group. And we also, like Jamie was saying, provide clinical support for building-based staff around kind of how we can support this individualized student. So that's our tier three. That's about 1% to 5% of the students that we work with. Trying to think if we had anything else to.
I think, I think we covered it. We're trying to keep this short and sweet tonight. Does anybody have any, any questions for us? I feel like that's the Reader's Digest version.
Scrolling down. Is there any questions from the committee? I guess I, I did have a question. How do you feel this differs from the primary and elementary level for, for what you're doing, Jen versus what Jamie's doing?
Oh, okay. That's a good question. So right now I'm working with, so two guidance couns, two counselors, primary and at Turkey Hill. And I support those counselors by taking some of the tier three students and providing that longer-term clinical support. So that way that frees up some of their time to provide that more tier two and tier one support. Does that answer your question? Also, case management is a big one. It takes up a lot of time sometimes to coordinate with the parents outside agencies, so I can kind of take on that role to free up some of their time that way, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think what I've been doing at the high school is pretty similar. It's just that that position's been established for longer. You know, and so it's just been a little bit different in terms of that transition of, you know, freeing up those counselors to take on that clinical need, you know, in terms of what Jen's doing. You know, I did that, you know, seven years ago. And so it's like, we're just slowly getting transitioned into that phase of support at the primary and elementary school.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, long-term, I would love to start hopefully next year, really some small groups and get some evidence-based groups in there for anxiety or coping strategies. But with COVID, it's been kind of challenging, so I've been doing a lot of one-on-one interventions with students that are on either IEPs or not, that might just need a really intensive targeted intervention to work on a skill.
And I think Jen brings up a good point there. You know, in terms of IEP versus non-IEP students, I think, you know, seven years ago when I came in a district, it was like, I got the IEP kids funnel to me, and now it's, it's so different. I think there's kids that five or four IEP or none of the above. It doesn't matter. They're falling on our laps for needing clinical support for a variety of reasons.
And I think too, we're seeing some more stress with kids. I was telling Jamie this example. I brought my son to the orthodontist recently, his first appointment, and the orthodontist was asking me, he goes, how many kids do you think I see pre-COVID a year with jaw pain, meaning stress, they're clenching their jaw? And I said, I don't know, maybe a handful? And he said, I used to see one to two a year pre-COVID with jaw pain due to stress. And he said, how many kids am I seeing now? What's your guess? After he found out I was a school counselor, this is what he was telling me. And I said, yeah, I don't know. And he said, one to two a day. And I just thought, wow, it's we're seeing it. So like Jamie was saying, even if the students aren't IEPs, they might need this targeted intervention one-on-one or in that small group because this year has been so stressful in many different ways for a lot of our students. So I thought that was a really just good example out in the community. Other providers are seeing this as well.
And that's clearly not a provider that one would associate.
No, I was so surprised and I was so happy he shared that with me. So we kind of were talking about different strategies. He was kind of picking my brain a little bit on what he could help, you know, teach his kids in the chair, you know, how to do a deep breathing, maybe some, like, really just kind of basic coping strategies that sometimes parents just need a quick reminder of, or even some resources. So we had a good conversation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There any other questions from the committee? Well, if not, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah.
It's great. It's great to know how we are supporting our students. We hear so much on the academic supports, but the, the social-emotional supports are just as important. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
So we are looking at our line item transfers now. Mr. Londa gonna go listen on?
I have Mr. Cassidy.
Okay.
Explain.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, business manager. I'm presenting three transfers this evening in front of the school committee. So the first one is transferring funds into our elementary school regular substitute account. There's been a number of number of increases in our absences at Turkey Hill. And a lot of that has to do with day-to-day subs or some of our Harris subbing for the teacher, and there's a, there's a cost there, and they're backfilling for the power. So that's why there's a deficit in that account. There's another transfer that's related to, this one is a $6,384 transfer that'll cover two expenses. This year we are increasing our student insurance by $384. That'll provide some mid-year insurance for some extra activities and some extra coverage for students. It's such a small fee for what we're gonna get, which is some will cover some accidents in and around the, the building area. And then a $6,000 transfer for a required audit for our student activity account at Turkey Hill in the middle school. And then finally, we have some transfers at Turkey Hill Elementary School. They are doing some end-of-the-year purchasing. So they're shifting some money to make some final purchases in their audiovisual line item as well as the reading supply account. So that is all I have. I'll turn it back to the chairperson for any questions.
Yes. That first line item transfer. I'm not sure that that made it into the, the school
Yeah.
folder. Could you add that to the folder right now?
The substitute one? Yep, I can add that right now.
Thank you.
I can read it to the school committee, so it's, once again, it's the it's a $12,000 transfer to the elementary school regular substitute account coming from the salary reserve. And my note to the committee is that the transfer will reconcile the Turkey Hill Elementary Salary Wages account, which been, has been utilized to cover multiple absences this school year. So.
Committee, any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion regarding these transfers. Mr. Leighton.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the three-line item transfers as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro.
Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
We'll call them.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And next are reviewing and approving meeting minutes from 1216. Two, three, and two, 10, and policy subcommittee minutes from. 11, 2, 11, 9, 11, 23, 11, 30, and 12, 7. I did not see where there are any. Dr. Burnham, did you get any communication regarding any requests for? Changes or updates?
Mr. Leighton. Requested one edit, which I believe has been made.
Was it, was it? Like. That was the word I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. It was actually just a typo edit kind of.
That's, I wondered if. Okay. All right. Then I will. Take a motion. I, I actually before we do this, I just want to make a comment around policy subcommittee. Meeting minutes. I guess. Ms. Kelly and Mr. Leighton, having been there, you approved, when you look at these as being present at that meeting. You feel comfortable with the representation of these minutes, yes?
Yes.
Okay. The only reason I ask is just as we approve, it's, it's been past practice to. Put forward policy subcommittee meeting minutes, just so that they are, are there for the public to see. But again, as three out of the five of us. Were not present at that meeting. We just wanted, you know, I. Feel better. You know, just having asked that question that you both feel comfortable and, you know, along with Dr. Burnham. On the representation of those minutes. So we will vote to then put those out publicly just from, from a transparency standpoint. So I think we're ready for roll call vote.
Are we going to make a motion?
Oh, yeah. A motion would be good, wouldn't it? Does one of the subcommittee members want to make that motion? Ms. Kelly.
Am I listing all the dates? Or am I doing a collective? If I can list the dates, but. Like, or I'm just going to say.
I did, I did list the dates.
Okay. So I, I, this is Laura Kelly. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular sessions and the policies.
And is there a second? Mr. Leighton.
Yeah, this is Brian Leighton. I second the motion.
Now roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Superintendent's report.
So I'd like to first start off by providing everyone an update on the announcement yesterday regarding the commissioner's plan. To return to school. The commissioner held a, a phone conference with superintendents this afternoon. Unfortunately, I really don't have much in the way of additional information to share. I did learn, however, that his plan is pending approval of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. His proposal would allow parents to opt for full remote through the remainder of this school year. This proposal is for a phased return to school five days per week, beginning with elementary students the first week in April. Middle and high school students would return at a later date yet to be determined. We, however, will not have additional information. Regarding guidance, protocols, expectations, et cetera, for approximately another two weeks. Which will essentially leave us only three weeks to develop a detailed plan in accordance with the guidance. And then be prepared to implement. I will not be able to bring forward a recommendation. As to our plan for implementation for the school committee's consideration. Until I have all of the necessary Department of Education guidance. As soon as I have additional guidance, I will share that with the committee. The staff and with families. I did have a Zoom drop-in meeting with staff this afternoon. To, you know, share with them that I, I really didn't learn very much new information this afternoon, but I did want to. You know. Hear their concerns. And hopefully alleviate some of, of their immediate worry. I also did put out a communication to families yesterday, basically providing the, the document that the commissioner. Posted on the Department of Ed website regarding. This plan, as much information as. As any of us have at this point. I would like to provide you a quick update on our COVID prevention fund grant. That was the grant that was recently announced. To be spent. By June 30th this year. That was the, the grant in the amount of $67,000 roughly. And we wanted to let you know that. We will be applying the following types of expenses to that grant. Including our student custodian wages. Our LT hotspot purchases, webcam. For classroom purchases, iPad cases and additional iPads for grades K and two. As well as the cost of Go Guardian, which is. A, a program that our IT department uses to monitor and safeguard for appropriate use of the internet for our students. I wanted to let you know that we're working hard as we have been. We, we continue to work hard to. Make adjustments as needed on a case-by-case basis to individual students' learning models. We have been on a case-by-case as determined through. The behavioral health support team meetings or student support team meetings, the academic support team meetings. Making adjustments and potentially returning students to school four days a week. In cases where it's deemed necessary for additional supports. For our students' academic progress. But at the middle school, we recently reached capacity in our classrooms, allowing for the six feet of distance. So what we're doing now in order to continue to have that option, that capacity to. Make those case-by-case decisions to. Bring students in four days a week as needed. We will be utilizing a classroom, an empty classroom at the middle school. We will staff with a paraprofessional for supervision. But this will allow us to. Bring students in four days a week. The students in that classroom. Would be students. That would. Otherwise be on their remote hybrid day. But instead of live streaming into their classroom from home on that day, they will live stream into their classroom. From a classroom in the building with staff supervision. And this allows the, the capabilities of our teachers to pop in and check in on students. And provide them some additional support and guidance as needed. So again, we continue to be very creative. And utilize all of the resources that we have to. Again, on a case-by-case make, case-by-case basis. Making those decisions that we feel are in the best interests of students who, who are struggling, either emotionally. Mental health-wise or struggling academically. And all of the schools know that that is a model that they can employ as well, should they reach capacity in their classrooms. You know, and while still maintaining that six feet of distance in the, in the classrooms. Relative to school choice. We wanted to circle back around and have that discussion on school choice, but given that we have two very full agendas in March. Relative to budget, budget hearing, budget Q and A, et cetera. And I can tell you that the, I have been able to confirm that we have until June 1st. To submit our vote, our position on school choice for the 21, 20. To school year. I'm suggesting that we do have time. We can delay the school choice as an agenda item until April. The 21, 22 school calendar, typically we bring that forward in February. And again, because we have a lengthy agenda this evening. We've deferred that until the next meeting, which happens to be next week. But we'll bring that forward for your initial review and consideration. At the next. Meeting. Regarding the recent round of feedback, to bring to you a summary of the feedback from the feedback surveys that we've been. Administering all, all year long. We will have a summary. A much abbreviated summary. We did make an adjustment to the survey this round. But we will have a, a survey summary for you at the next meeting. And it's our intention to. For the, the March. Feedback cycle to hold that in the form of the Zoom forums. Rather than another electronic survey. You know, we feel that that's beneficial. It allows for. More interactive question-answer. Experience for, for our families to give us some, some feedback. Social media and internet safety. As you know, all of our students have their own school provided Chromebooks now, and they are free to use these devices during non-school hours. And we wanted to provide some safety advice for our students. As a result, we've arranged for a social media and internet safety presentation. To be provided by the District Attorney's Office. You may be familiar that the District Attorney's Office often. Provides different types of presentations to schools all free of charge. So. Those. Presentations for staff were being held during, via Google Meet. They were scheduled for today and tomorrow. So they will, again, they'll, they're expected to conclude those sessions again tomorrow. And of course, for our students. These are occurring for our students' grades three through 12. So any of our students. You know, who are joining the Google Meet, their parents are also. Obviously available to sit next to and. Hear that presentation as well. I did want to offer a follow-up to our fall athletics presentation, and in particular, the. Public comment that followed at the end of that meeting. Obviously, it's public comment, so AD Bunnel did not provide an, or offer. Additional information in response to some of the public comment. But I did want to, for the benefit of all the committee members as well as the community. To follow up with some of that information. So there was concern or disappointment that was expressed. Relative to the indoor track not having any meets. And we want to, again, agree that this is disappointing. However. It was stated in the presentation that the majority of facilities that host indoor meets are not doing so. So there's really no venue for, for this type of event. AD Bunnel did mention that the Reggie Lewis Center in Roxbury is actually one of the largest. Venues for this type of athletic event, and it is being used as a vaccination center currently. So it cannot host any track events. Additionally, both the written document that was posted with our meeting documents for our last meeting. As well as was mentioned in AD Bunnel's presentation, he's actually going to be working. With other schools in our football pod. To arrange for and hold one or two meets. Outdoors in April, when we have a better chance of reasonably good weather. Regarding football teams practicing on the turf. While track practices were in session, that is true. However. Those students were not our. Football students. Those students were student athletes from other school districts, and they were using the turf without permission. That had already at the time of our last meeting been addressed by AD Bunnel. He reached out to the AD for the district from which those students belong and. Addressed it directly with the AD, who then addressed it with the coach. So that. That has been addressed. It actually had been addressed, even at the time of our, our last meeting. There was concern relative to the cleanliness and disinfecting of the porta potties that would be used. And. You know, we've used the porta potties in the past, Hollis Hills Farm as an example. No, no issues around, you know. Cleanliness or disinfecting protocols at that time. And AD Bunnel did state in his presentation that the porta potties would be sanitized daily as they had been in, in the fall. And I think it's important to note, just as a point of information. AD Bunnel personally sanitized. The facilities at the field house. For the fall season. So again, he will personally be attentive to the disinfecting protocols. For the porta potties in the fall to season as well. And lastly, there was some concern regarding the cold weather. And AD Bunnel did explain in his presentation that we will be following the cold weather guidelines during the season to help minimize. Risk of injury for our athletes. And those cold weather guidelines are also posted on our website. And, you know, it's worth noting again that. Those districts that are operating in a fully remote model are required. To have a school committee vote to approve participation in each season. So Lunenburg is not operating in a fully remote model, and we don't. We're not required to have a school committee vote for participation in the season. But we believe it's important for the plans for each season, each season to be presented publicly. For the school committee to discuss any concern around any of the protocols that are being proposed. As well as to present that all publicly. And it's important because we want our parents and our student athletes to have all of that information. So that they can make an informed decision for themselves about. Participation in the season. Right? That, that's something that is still. Up to individual families and students to determine their level of comfort. With the safety, safety protocols that are, that are put in place. So that's why we bring it forward and, and present it and ask for your approval. Because we feel that it's that important. And, and lastly, I'd like to share some good news. Regarding the K5 assistant or the pre-K5 assistant principal position. Mr. Adams, the Lunenburg primary principal, and Mrs. Champagne, the Turkey Hill Elementary Principal. Engaged in a process to solicit input from staff and families regarding, regarding a hiring process for the shared. Assistant principal position. Mr. Kevin White was hired to the role as interim this year while Mr. Adams was appointed as the interim principal. For the primary school for this year. The two principals held Zoom forums to solicit input from parents. And staff. They also solicited input via email. Based on the input provided and based on their own experience working with Mr. White this year. The principals have recommended that Mr. White be permanently appointed. To the Turkey Hill Elementary School, Lunenburg Primary School Assistant Principal Position. And I am pleased to announce this evening that Mr. White has accepted this position. His background in special education, his student-centered approach to leadership. And his demonstrated capacity to foster a positive school climate and culture will make him an additional. Asset to our district leadership team. And I will invite you to. Join me in congratulating Mr. White and our principals will share this news of the appointment with their school communities. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Congratulations to Mr. White. I. He is on our meeting tonight, so. Congratulations. One quick. Thought or comment, Dr. Burnham? Is, if more guidance. From. Desi comes out at odd times that. Desi comes out at odd times that don't coincide with a meeting right away, is that something you can present to us? And we could, as a school committee, potentially meet as we have before with like a one agenda item? If to help facilitate anything that needs to happen?
I actually think that that might be necessary. Depending on the release of this guidance, it may not come until the week that we are meeting mid-March. So I'm still going to need some time to digest with the team relative to our, we have a foundation to to begin with, right? Because we did have a full return model in our reopen plan.
I wondered.
Which allowed for three feet of distance between students. And as I understand it, as long as you can provide three feet, there's not going to be an opportunity for a waiver granted by the department. So we do have the foundation of a plan for a full return. If you recall, the challenges that we were having with that model, which is why we did not recommend. One, three feet of distance was a recommendation that was based in Massachusetts only. That was not any guidance that was coming from the World Health Organization or the CDC at that time. So there was a level of a high level of discomfort with that notion as a as an adequate safety measure amongst our staff. And quite frankly, I think honestly, even for many of our parents. The two real logistical challenges were bus transportation with one student per seat and lunches. So the Department of Ed has already released their updated guidance on bus transportation, which allows for two students per seat. So we occasionally on the elementary run, the primary school, Turkey Hill Elementary School run may have had three students to a seat. So we will definitely have to go back and revisit what that impact might might be. Should be okay with with those parameters for the secondary bus run, which is the grade six through 12. The more significant challenge and the thing I don't have any additional information or guidance on right now is how to handle lunches. Lunches at the time, the guidance was six feet apart for kids to take their masks off, and all kids needed to be sitting facing the same direction. So you couldn't have students across the table from each other. They were also, at that time, not allowing us to utilize barriers. So Plexiglas, although I would not put glass on on the lunch tables. But we can create other screen barriers to to get that job done. But at the time, that was not allowable. So that really presented a significant challenge to us as well. We would have had to start having lunch sessions at the middle high school at nine thirty a.m. and run those sessions beyond one o'clock. So again, that was a significant hurdle. What is the guidance on lunch? We're not going to know for about another two weeks. And again, that kind of brings us into that time when we're going to have that March meeting with a budget hearing and your discussion and deliberation and a vote on the budget. I think not only for timing, but just for, you know, a singular focus. I think it is going to make sense for us to schedule a separate meeting just for that one topic. You know, how are we going to approach a return? And again, we'll have approximately three weeks to take a develop a plan, present a plan, approve a plan, and then be prepared to execute the plan. So though that timeline is really, if my my opinion, not optimal. Not optimal. But I will say that there's a lot that has happened in the course of this school year and in preparation for this school year that has not been optimal. And again, I have have faith that we'll be able to to come up with a plan that we can execute that maintains a focus on safety for our staff and our students. All of our school community, from the students and the ways in which they've stepped up in so many cases, we do have some students who are struggling and it's our obligation to support them in a better way. But so many of our students have stepped up and have done very well with this model. Our staff have been extraordinary in constant pivots and adjustments to better meet the needs of of our students and their learning. Our parents have been absolutely extraordinary in terms of their patience, their understanding, and their support this entire year. Add to that that we oftentimes receive a lot of encouragement from our parents. The feedback in the surveys has been very positive. Yes, there's constructive criticism in there as well, and we take that and we utilize it. This has been less than desirable for everyone involved. And everyone, I think, is to be commended in the ways in which they have stepped up. They've made adjustments. And they're making the very best of this situation possible. And I really, I don't think I can I don't think I can say strongly enough how grateful I am that these are the situations that that we're dealing with collaboratively together, supporting everyone to make the best of an awful, awful, awful situation. And I think when you see the the assessment report that that we'll bring to you next meeting, you'll see that we're really doing a pretty good job. We are. Not that this isn't difficult for some students and not that some students don't need additional targeted support. They do. But the the data indicates we're we're doing pretty well. So again, I would I would just I will get information out as soon as I possibly can. I will work with the team, you know, and the 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 staff to develop a plan that meets the new guidelines, and I'll bring it bring it forward to you and get it out to our our families and our staff for their consideration as soon as I possibly can. We don't really have a choice. We have to work on a very quick timeline as soon as that information is provided to us.
Thank you. Student Representatives Report. I was just doing one more scroll to ensure that we I did not see student representative, and I don't. So we will move on to New Business, LHS Program of Studies, new statistics offering.
So invite Mr. McGrath to kick this off.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Rob McGrath, the principal at Lunenburg High School. Dr. Burnham, am I able to share my screen?
You should be.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
The presentation mode. Okay, everyone, I just wanted to kind of go over some of of the 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 big changes, not there aren't tons of changes to the programs of study, but I just wanted to kind of go over a few things. So the graduation requirements have not changed. That is staying the same. So all the the credit distribution, that that is all staying the same when it comes to four credits for math, three credits for full credits for English, three credits for math. You have you must take four classes overall in in your whole year experience, but you you have to pass for math, Algebra one, Algebra two, and Geometry. Science is still the three credits with two labs for those two classes. So you have to have two of those science credits have to be a lab based class. Social Studies. The one thing I wanted to highlight about Social Studies is that there were a couple of those classes that I was not able to offer this year because of the situation with COVID and having to really change and scramble with all of the the models that we had to try to handle. So those are going to be some of the highlights that I'll that I'll go over in some of the slides because there were some classes that we had offered two years ago when we implemented the Social Studies change. But I needed to change them to remote classes just to to handle the the remote model that I needed to have for certain students elected for fully remote. Foreign language is still two credits, and those are back to back classes. So for example, you have to take like Spanish one, and then you have to take Spanish two, or if you come into the high school, taking Spanish two because you did well. And in the eighth grade, Spanish, you would then need to pass Spanish three. So it's two consecutive years of a language. So for example, it would not count if you were to take, say, Spanish one and pass it, and then French one and pass it. It has to be two consecutive years of a language. So it has to be French one and French two, or you know, Latin two and Latin three. The Unified Arts is still two credits. Health Education is 1.5 and Physical Education is 1.5. And it's still 24 credits to graduate at Lunenburg High School, and we are implementing the new the the new course that Mr. Stevenson presented the last time we were here before you're talking about the the course of studies. And that has to do with the new change that the Department of Ed and and the state wants us to do with our history electives. And the only difference that is going to change with that particular situation is that we were going to have that be handled through AP Gov as well as our CSL English and our new elective, our CSL elective. We did not feel it it matched quite well with AP Gov, so it is now going to be just the CSL, the Community Service Learning Class and that Community Service Learning Point Five elective semesterized class. So students, in order to pass that point five graduation requirement that the state is mandating we do, the students are going to have two choices to be able to get that elective completed. And that will be the point five elective, which they can start taking from sophomore year on. And again, it's a semesterized class, so they have, you know, numerous opportunities for that. Or if they end up taking the CSL, the Community Service Learning Class in our English curriculum. So those two options will be able to fulfill that requirement. The couple of changes I just wanted to highlight, the medieval experience is one of those history classes that I was not able to offer. I had to change that, and I had to have Mr. Makuga teach an online class. We will be running that. That'll be back in the program of studies. I probably should have said at the very beginning, I am planning to build the schedule like we are coming back in September. I started building the schedule last week when we're on vacation. I've I've kind of created the skeleton for the whole schedule for the 2021-22 program of studies, and students will be going through the course tally selections probably sometime in middle to early March. So next month, we're going to start that process where students are going to be choosing their their classes. Teachers are starting to meet with them for course recommendations and going through some of those recommendations with students. But Honors Medieval is one of the classes that we had to change. This was another one. The Nuclear Age was a class that we had offered in the past that I was not able to offer this year because we needed to move it to an online class. So both of those classes, the Medieval Experience and the Nuclear Age class will be back in the program of studies, and we are planning to run them. Some new classes for the 2020-22 will be a new Unified Art History class. This this class is really more about art history and kind of if you read the course description, it it's talking about the global prehistory to the present. This is something that I think Mr. De Perry is going to do a great job with. He tends to switch his course electives every couple of years, just because if a lot of students have taken like Video Production one, he usually kind of every few years switches it and then brings it back because he's trying to get as many students into the classes as as he can. The next Unified Art class is a choice based art class. Mrs. Giuliani will be teaching this. This is going to have a lot of student choice, so it was very intriguing to me. I liked it when she started talking to me about this class. This is going to really allow the students to really use their imagination and, you know, express when making works that convey personal meaning and interpretation. So I really like that it it's bringing more student choice into their work. And to me, that's that's always when you can get the best out of students when they're when it's their choice and they're really passionate about it. I think you can see, you know, a lot of their a lot of their passion come out in their artwork. So I was I was very excited when Mrs. Giuliani was pitching this idea to me. So I'm I'm excited to see kids sign up for this and and see this course in action next year. And then the the next course, which is going to be replacing Sports Literature, is a creative writing course. Sports Literature has been running for a while. The numbers have solely been declining. And we're really trying to get more of a more involvement in the writing process, not just in the English classes. So we're hoping with creative writing that we'll we'll catch more more students in the student body because sports literature, you know, a lot of students, you know, I I love sports, so that would be something I'd be interested in, but it's kind of a niche. There are a lot of students who probably could care less about sports. So with this creative writing class, the hope is we can kind of get more students involved in the writing process, and this will be kind of reach a more global audience. You know, if I had enough English teachers, I'd love to keep the sports literature and do the creative writing, but you know, with the staffing, I we have to make choices, and this is one of them. So we're going to see how creative writing does with our student tallies, and maybe we'll see a lot of interest in that. And English to Barren will be very excited if if this course is a hit. So those are the three new classes. One in English, two in Unified Arts, and the last one, this is a statistics class that you'll you might have some some questions. This is a little bit more involved. So I have invited Mrs. Jen Miller to join me, my math department head. She can certainly talk a little bit more in depth and would answer any math questions, you know, a lot better than I ever could. So Jen, are you still here?
I am.
Okay, so I will I will toss the ball over to you.
Thank you. So again, I'm Jennifer Miller, the Mathematics Department Head at Lunenburg High School. So I'm here tonight to present a new math course for the 21-22 school year and hopefully moving forward as well. And to have this course added to the program of studies. So we'd like to offer statistics. We're going to be offering it at a college prep CP level. It's a one-credit full-year course, open to grades 11 and 12. The prerequisites would be Geometry and Algebra two. So this course is for students continuing their study in mathematics after completion of Algebra two. So by requiring a prerequisite of only Algebra two, more students will have the opportunity to take this course. Many academic programs at the college level include statistics as a requirement. And regardless if you attend college or not, the ability to interpret data is critical in the modern world and a skill required for many professions. So the focus of this course will cover the concepts and methods of collecting, analyzing, and drawing conclusions from data. We will also, besides statistics, this course will offer some probability as well. And the use of technology is integrated throughout this course. So the slide you see here will be the course description in the program of studies. Mr. McGrath, if you can go to the next slide, please. And I am also proposing a textbook for the new statistics course, as we do not currently have a stats textbook at the high school. So the proposed textbook is called Understandable Statistics: Concepts and Methods, and it's actually an AP Edition as well. It's a the textbook package that is proposed is a hard copy and an online textbook with resources available to students and the teachers. There's a lot of applicable software that's available, and that's supported with it, Mini Tab, SPSS, and Excel. Since the majority of our students have Chromebooks, we'll be doing a lot of Google Sheets as, you know, instead of Excel with our students. The support there's support videos with this textbook package on content and technology. At the end of each chapter, there's a Using Technology section that provides further instruction with technology, and there's many With technology and there's many current real world applications throughout the text that include new examples in a variety of different disciplines. So I'm describing the textbook because as mentioned, we're in need of a textbook to run the course. Many of our students feel having a hard copy of their math textbook is a better option in learning, practicing and studying the material. Than worksheets and just online supplements alone. So I'm here tonight to not only describe the new statistics course, we'd like to offer. But then it would also require purchase of forty of the proposed textbooks in order to offer this for next school year. I have already submitted a quote in the twenty one, twenty two school budget for doing so. As far as staffing in the mathematics department, with our current staff, we can offer one section of statistics next year. And again, it would run as a full year course. With more staffing, I could run more sections and possibly an AP and advanced placement version of statistics. The textbook I have requested for the course does have the AP components and is approved by College Board as an AP Statistics Book. Though there are AP components included in this textbook, this book is mainly used for the college preparatory statistics. So it's a book that can do both for us, which is great. And as a final remark, I'd like to add. That the majority of the mid watch schools, you know, schools in our region are already offering statistics at either a college prep or an AP level. Many schools are offering both. So I would like Ludenberg High School to stay competitive with our neighboring schools and offering statistics would be one way to do so. And I would like to thank you for this time and can answer any questions you may have regarding this course.
Thank you, Jen. And I would also add that the other courses that I had presented, there are no. Books that are going to be purchased for those particular courses, a lot of the courses, the Unified Art Courses and the Creative Writing Course. Those are going to be supplemental materials and things that the the art teachers will be able to provide. And so there'll be no purchase, there'll be no need to purchase books for the other courses, only the statistics. So as Jen said, we're both here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Layton.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. I did have some questions about the statistics. I I did like the idea that you were designing it so that you could potentially do it as an AP course too. I did have a question about. You had said it was going to be a college prep course. Was there any thought on making it an honors course too? Is there any? Reason to consider it a college prep versus honors?
Yes, I want, um, you know, I mean, it is obvious, you know, there is a purchase involved with the book. I'd want something that could grow any way we can with it, you know. We'd want to offer it to as many students as possible and see what the interest is at first. And by offering college prep, we could do so. And then from there, you know, it depending on interest and staffing and what we have. You know, we have a book that can support CP honors and advanced placement. And could we offer it in honors? You know, we could change the rigor and do something like that as well. So you know, the big part at this point is would there be interest in it and want to keep it open to as many students as possible?
And then my second question was. So I'm assuming the curriculum aligns pretty well with AP. Could a student choose to take the college prep? Course and then maybe self study a little additional material to take the AP exam, even if they were taking the college prep version?
Could be interest in that, you know, I'd want to get a year under our belt, you know, running it first, kind of, you know, get our feet wet with everything. But I actually teach the AP Calculus at the high school, so I'm very much aware of the AP audit with statistics. What that would involve for us to offer AP stats. You know, it's, it's a fairly easy process to move forward with it, you know. So if you, you know, could we, in the course we're designing, we want to make sure that we have opportunity to do that. I know in foreign language, for example, you know, they have students that are, you know, taking an AP component with, you know, and students that aren't in the same class. So could we offer that down the road? We could, you know, there isn't anything I can see right now that would say no to that. However, again, we want to see interest wise, you know, are are the students interested in this? And, you know, especially with colleges too, a lot, a lot of colleges, you know, require stats over calculus. So, you know, definitely down the road would be something we'd be interested in doing.
Sure, thank you.
And I would suggest that any student can register for any AP test. So even if it's not offered in our school as an AP course. If there are students who are feeling particularly confident, as you, as you indicated, Mr. Layton, and they could perhaps do a little bit of additional prep. In anticipation, register on their own and take and take the test even without having taken an AP level stats course in school.
And I'm just off the top of my head. I don't know this for sure, but I I know that the edges here program that we use does offer quite a bit of AP options. I do believe AP Stats is in their course of studies. I would have to double check that, but I think that would be an option as well for students. But I would need to triple check that to to make sure, because I'm just, I'm doing that off the top of my head and that can be dangerous sometimes, so.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Shapiro.
Um, not a question, more of a comment, but I just want to thank you guys for doing this. I think it's huge to be offering this at Ludenberg. As this is something that I think a lot of students have felt has been lacking in the past. And so I really appreciate everything you're doing to make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, I had one quick question regarding the civics. In terms of, remind us what year the civics requirement actually comes into being a graduation requirement? It's obviously not this year.
Right, two thousand twenty three, the class of two thousand twenty three. And they have to, they, you know, it starts sophomore year and it's a semesterized class. So you pretty much have kind of six cracks at it to to be able to to take it. Or if a student knows they're going to be taking the honors CSL course, their senior year for English. They don't have to worry about taking the semesterized course because it will be covered in the honors CSL course. But what we're telling students is if you don't know that, you really should think about taking the semester course. So that way you're not, you know, forced to to take it. You know, your senior year, the CSL course or the or the semesterized course. But my hope is to offer it semester one and semester two every year. That way there, there's multiple opportunities for students to be able to reach that requirement.
Will there be preference given next year to? Under to what will be the current, what will be the junior class next year and sophomore class because they have to have it?
We always give preference to seniors. Every course, we give, we give preference to seniors. You know, if there's a, if there's a unified, even a unified art class that a senior needs. You know, we will have a conversation with a sophomore. You still have two years to take it. We need to get the senior in this class. So because graduation is always the most important thing. So to answer your question, yes, there will be preference to seniors. And then, you know, juniors and so forth and so on.
No, I was wondering if it would go in the reverse only because it is not a graduate, it will not be a graduation requirement for twenty twenty two. I didn't know if you got to the point of classes getting that full.
I I don't believe if we come across that, we will make sure that students are able to access that class. I don't foresee that happening because I don't see students who don't need the class taking it. If that happens, we'll cross that bridge, but I really don't. There are a lot of other classes that students will probably want to get into the ceramics and that's, that's a pretty, you know, big one that want to. So there's a lot of other classes that students want to get into typically as opposed to doing a community service learning project. But if someone really wants to take it, I I I think we could figure out how to to make it work. Cause I think it's, I'm I'm excited about that class as well. I think that's going to be a great experience for students. Anytime they can do something in the community and 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 work towards a project, I think you learn more with that type of learning. And I'm a big proponent of that type of learning.
Thank you. I don't think we have any other questions from the committee. Dr. Burnham, thank, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for having us. I'd also like to thank Jen. She does a fantastic job. And this is something she's been working on for a number of years. So the statistics course, she really needs the credit for that. It's been something she's been passionate about and been bringing to my desk quite a few years. So I'm glad we were able to get it through this year or hopefully get it through if we can get that book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Turkey.
Mrs. Bertrand, would it be all right to just have have a vote to accept?
Oh, yes, yeah. It is an action item. So thank you. So. Committee members, Ms. Ashambo, can you put forward a motion to accept the program of studies for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two for Ludenberg High School?
I would be happy to make a motion to accept the program of studies for the year twenty one, twenty two at Ludenberg High School as presented this evening.
And a second. Ms. Shapiro.
Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
I think we're ready for roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly? Mr. Layton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. And now more discussion regarding the Turkey Hill Elementary School Building Project.
So I'd invite Mr. Londa to provide you a little overview.
Good evening. So the, in late January, we had a request from town manager to provide some information about anticipated costs for. For the, for a Turkey Hill project. This was coming as the the Passios Building Design Committee was getting ready to get their, their first shot at an estimate for that building project. So I think the town manager was likely looking to try to put these two projects into some kind of. Idea of how they might affect each other and where they might lay out and maybe a long term plan. So what we wanted to do tonight is to present some of the methodology and thought process behind. What we worked up for the town manager. So this hasn't been shared with with her at this point. But it was put together as a, as a memo with a single spreadsheet that. Is, you know, looks at a term from twenty twenty through twenty thirty. And not knowing, you know, when this project would actually kick off, we wanted to at least have, you know, some numbers that go all throughout that period. So as far as the methodology, you know, the Turkey Hill, of course, built in nineteen sixty nine. And at the current time in twenty twenty one, since its fifty second year of service. It is sixty seven thousand five hundred and seventy three square feet. And that's important because that drives a lot of the thought process about cost, how costs are determined. And so I had to come up with some assumptions. So I'm going to go over those to get into the numbers on this. So one of the assumptions I made was based upon the fact that currently we only have three grades at Turkey Hill Elementary School. That a project going forward would look either like a. A building the same size or renovation the same size without an addition. And what might trigger, you know, additional square footage would be if if the district had to move another grade into that school. And at this point, there's, you know, I'm not at the point that I would say, yeah, that's definitely going to happen in the next ten years. So so we made the assumption that we're, that that's not happening. We based renovation costs on that sixty seven thousand square foot number. And but we also didn't, I also didn't want to rule out the possibility for a. For a replacement building, because there there is a case for that as well. So so we're providing, we provide information on both renovation addition. And for a new replacement building. And so those are the two things we had, but both of them at the sixty seven thousand square foot number. And then, so what I went to the MSBA website, they have, they provide current data about, about. Projects that have been completed and they have a, an average renovation addition. Cost per square foot and they also have a cost for new construction. That those numbers are based upon roughly eight schools. Or make up the database for for each one of those two categories. And they're kind of split, about half of them are high schools and half of them are elementary schools. So we use the, I use the average, but you know, we we might find ourselves on the lower end. Because as I said, we would, we, elementary schools typically are 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 less costly to renovate and to construct than than high schools were. So we might be in the lower side of that actual, that actual number. So in F, using this current year's cost data. Cost to renovate. Per square foot is four hundred and one dollars per square foot. And for new construction, four hundred and seventy three dollars per square foot. And then every year out beyond that is a three percent escalator. And that's, that's based on the number that the MSBA has on their website is that three percent. So I use that, use those to kind of come up with all what the cost would be. And so for twenty twenty one. It costs for a renovation for sixty seven thousand square foot building, we'd be somewhere on the order of around twenty seven million dollars. Now, MSBA participates, of course, any project we would be doing with them. And I wanted to provide that insight as well. So with with middle school, high school, the stated rate that we got was sixty three percent. But the actual effective rate was much lower and that that's a combination of a number of policy decisions about how. Their reimbursement process moves forward. The MSBA does not, does not reimburse on necessarily the current cost per square foot. They have a limit. So I believe when we were doing the middle school, high school, it was two hundred and eighty five dollars per square foot. So they limit some of their participation. So the effective, the effective rate was closer to fifty percent. So I used that, so in in twenty twenty one, that that twenty seven thousand, twenty seven million would be down to around thirteen point five million. And if it was new construction, new construction would have been closer to thirty two million. And once again, with MSBA participation, it would be closer to sixteen million. So that's the, some of the methodology and that we brought that, you said, with that three percent escalator out through twenty thirty. Not knowing exactly when a project would get going. And, you know, I kind of think that clearly the Passios project will probably have an impact on this in a major way. But it, we needed to at least give them some idea of what it might be. And let me just put the this in a little bit of perspective. So said in twenty twenty one, our cost for MSBA with, for rental with MSBA participation around, around thirteen point five million. Currently in the capital plan. Through the ten year period from, from FY twenty three through FY thirty one. We're showing eleven projects currently valued at 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 around thirteen point five million dollars. So this is, you know, it's meant to be, not to be a surprise. In fact, that's meant to really to kind of paint the picture. It says, look, this, this is out there and we will need to come to grips with it. This is roughly a cost of what it will be. It's, but it's not really. The one thing I would say about it is that that thirteen point five million dollars really can't get spent as a series of eleven projects. There's just not enough time and the disruption would be. Would, you know, be ten years of just this total disruption. So this is really, it's going to be, you know, a decision on renovate in a project or replace. And and I, and you know, the the rest of the memo I put together on this, you know, talks about some of the issues here with Turkey Hill. And what what really requires that? And a lot of it has to do with, you know, or. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, or the condition of life safety equipment. You know, what we have works, it's just what we, what we have is, is really old. Or it's something we don't have. So, you know, we have the origin, you know, we have a, a fire alarm system that is not really meeting, does not meet current code. We have, we have no sprinkler system in the building. ADA, ADA compliance is, I would say is on the poor side. We've done the best we can short of a renovation, but there are a number of issues with ADA compliance that, that really will not get addressed unless we do some kind of large-scale project. And then we have some envelope concerns, the roof being, being one of them. You know, it's roughly, currently roughly around 24 years old. So you, so we're moving towards the point where we really would be thinking hard about doing something with the roof. The, the issue would be there as a, as we typically talk about in the capital plan is if you just do the roof, you, you push out MSBA participation for another project 10 years. So really maybe that, that roof replacement, a roof for repair project would be something that would be put in with the larger project. And then about the HVAC, we're currently, you know, the, the system we currently have works. It is old and we are operating it. And it's operating well, but it is based upon the, the 1969 pneumatic control. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's at the end of its life by, by a long, long amount and would need to be replaced. Likely we would also probably think about maybe a boiler upgrade in a renovation. You know, we have enough life on the existing boilers that we'll get to, you know, if it was pushed out a long time, unless it wasn't pushed out 20 years, we, we probably have plenty of life in the boilers to get to that renovation. The electrical system, you know, it's, once again, it's the original. And it is, you know, it has, it, it needs to be upgraded. That's about the best you could say. New sub panels, new, new main switching gear. You know, and in any kind of renovation, you know, we would want to see that technology bump like we saw with the, the high school and the middle school in, in that project. Anyway, I, I would say that the one thing that the renovation probably won't be, will have difficulty addressing would be any desires to add air conditioning. We don't really have the room for, for duck work, which I think would become a significant limitation. And I would say that, you know, replacement does, is not without its challenges as well. If you're doing a renovation, where do the students go? You probably are into portable classrooms for a year to be able to get the project done. If you're doing a replacement building, then it comes to, you know, the issue of, okay, well, where are we putting this building on the campus and what do we do, do with the, the the activities that get displaced because of that, whether it be parking or athletics. But I said, so I think, you know, these are some reasonable numbers that allow the town manager and the finance committee to, to, you know, get an idea of, well, what's coming and, and, you know, well, well, how that'll affect. You know, the Passios project is hard to say, but it, it, you know, there's at least assistance from, from the MSBA to be able to get this done when we think the time is right. That's all I have on, on this issue. I'm glad to take any questions you have.
Questions from the committee? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Londa, for the very in-depth presentation. I did have a couple of questions. You answered most of them. I'm assuming the MSBA calculations would include like an asbestos abatement if we were doing, say, a reno?
So this is one of the rules that, that when you look at what MSBA will not assist with that comes into play. I, I have a feeling that they won't, they would not support any additional asbestos abatement. It would, it would become a cost that would be just passed back to the town and the project. And that's why I said I picked that 50% rather than 63%. That was an area in, we were doing a demolition of the high school that, that we were told, well, we don't, we're not going to assist with that. And the reason why they do that is because I, I believe they, the thought process is, well, okay, you knew you had asbestos floors. You should have already taken care of them at this point.
And then my second question was for, in regards to replacing the building. And I know obviously it has to do a lot with finances and finance and the select board, but I wanted to know your, your opinion as in your position, what year would make the most sense for a replacement?
So this is, I think, you know, the building is continues to operate well enough that this is not a pressing concern that we got to go out there and renovate the building now. It, it, this is really, I think, going to be driven by the finances of the town with the Passios building needing to, you know, needing to get a vote. Should that not? Not go forward? You know, there'll have to be a decision made about the Passios. If the town is not going into, into debt for additional renovation for that building, then this might move, move faster. But my guess is it goes, the Passios goes forward. It's, you know, there's a lot of cost associated with that and therefore this project might get pushed out. And the question is how far out you, you're willing to push it. You know, I, I listed through 2030 because I thought, well, that's, that's still not, you know, at that point, it's 61 years old. You're, you're, you're getting to the point where you really want to do this project. Remind, remind you that we did tear down Lunenburg High School when it was 61 years old.
Thank you, Mr. Londa.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Londa. And old business, we're going to move back to capital plan consideration.
And again, I'd invite Mr. Londa to provide this item for you.
And so this, this is also was prepared in, in a memorandum. And it, it has to do with some recommendations around the FY '22 capital plan. So we're, you know, starting to see the, the, the town manager brief, yeah, the results of the capital planning committee's work. And I, I think when I, as I thought about this, I was like, oh, we, we probably should be thinking hard about what, what possibly think can be done with, with the school department's capital plan going forward. One of the principles that we've kind of tried to use in developing the capital plan is trying to make sure that we didn't have any one year where we had, you know, extremely large amount of requests. And then, so we're trying, always try to balance the requests year to year. And the, you know, the projects for this year, you know, have all got, been prioritized by the capital planning. The, the, our number one priority was the, was the air, primary school air conditioning. Anyway, that, that was ranked 19 out of 19. And I think that, as I look at that, it, it says to me that that this is, is a project that will have a hard time competing with things, not just this year, but in other years. And that if, if, if we bump it into the next fiscal year, when it will now compete with other projects that the school department has needs to, to take care of. And so that's part of what this is all, this recommendation is all about. We did, it looks like we're going to get support for the Passios or the Turkey Hill Elementary School envelope repairs at 67,000. The only other project we had was, was an FY '21 project that, you know, when we made this submission, still hadn't been approved. And that was the 28,000 for the air conditioning for the administration for Turkey Hill. So that, that, of course, did get approved at the November special time meeting. So we were just down to two projects and it looks like we're going to see funding for the repairs on Turkey Hill to the envelope, but that, you know, it looks like we probably will not see funding for this air conditioning project. And then, so if we bump that into, if that gets bumped into the next fiscal year, we also have a an important project there for Lunenburg Primary School. And that has to do with the fire alarm system. So this memo talks about some of our needs with that. The fire alarm system there, you know, is, is at 16 years old. It was, it was a Faraday system, which was a company that was then bought out by Siemens. And they have not made parts for that system since 2007. And the performance of that system continues to degrade. And we particularly, we, we don't really see it through much of the year, but in cold weather, the system just does not perform well. We see smoke detectors go in and out of trouble, which, you know, every time they do that, they fire off a phone message to our monitoring company. And we can see it, you know, somewhere between 40 and 80 phone messages in, in an hour if a detector is allowed to run away and just keep, you know, going in and out of trouble. So we, we monitor that carefully. And you said, it, it is affected by, by cold. You know, we don't see this for most, except, you know, from December through March, we see this problem of this runaway, these runaway detectors. It doesn't really seem to be a lot of there isn't going to be much pattern other than it's a smoke detector and it's cold weather involved. We've had some, we've had a couple of texts out from a variety of companies and they all seem to kind of point at the main board and say, the main board may have some issues. But the, the main board, the smoke detectors, and there are a lot of smoke detectors in the primary school. They're kind of a, a joint package. You can't replace the main board without replacing the smoke detectors and the main board. The main board that Faraday made, there's no longer parts available. And Siemens does not make parts for either. So, so we've identified this as being kind of an important thing to take care of. We had it in the FY '23 plan. And, you know, the cost to replace the, the smoke detectors, all the initiating parts of this fire alarm, the pull stations, the smoke detectors, heat detectors, all of that is estimated at $127,000 to replace. And we did ra- raise this as, as a, you know, a concern. And we, we did have Representative Senna put in a request into the into the budgetary process to help fund this. It did not get fully funded. It apparently has been funded at $25,000. But if this is one of these projects, you had to do all of it or none of it because then the panel has got to be matched to the smoke detectors. And so you have to do the whole thing or you don't do any of it. So my recommendations were, you know, to, to go back to the town manager on capital plan and raise the issue about any potential of the town funding the, the, the smoke detector project from FY '23. And then that we bump, wind up bumping the air, the air conditioning project into FY '23 as a result. If we're not able to see some support from the town on that, I would, I would recommend that if we find that we have end of year funds that would allow us to move this forward, that we do. You know, the, the, the system, should it fail, once again, will not be repairable. So it behooves us to get it out of there and to get, to get this issue resolved. But and I realize it's not a insignificant cost. But it would, you know, require that either the town to add an additional 102,000 to the capital plan to make that happen. Or, or we find, you know, or the school department will find that, that kind of money before the year ends. But that's essentially the recommendation that I had for, for this FY '22 capital plan. And if you have questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. I did have a question. You mentioned Representative Cena. Is it possible that we can also explore reaching out to Representative Cena and also Senator Cronin to see if they can get potential funding for this in the future? Something we want to backboard or?
So we have the 25, so apparently we have $25,000 worth of support from the state through, through the budgetary process. You know, we've, if we, if we don't take care of it this year, we certainly could ask again in the next year so we can get additional support.
I guess that's what I'm asking. I'm hoping that if we don't get the project done this year, that we'd ask again for support in the next budget.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Londa? Will you be able to come back, Mr. Londa, and provide us an update closer to the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, I can. Like I said, I know that, you know, for, for this year, I said, I'm not sure we would get any additional support from the state this year, but they say, my recommendation would be to see if the town would do something with this year's capital plan.
Capital planning is meeting again on, on Tuesday night. I don't know if you are aware, but it sitting on that committee as well, I think, and, and knowing that the, the project at the primary, based on, on cost and deemed necessity or urgency of it, you know, placed it where it was. So this obviously is in a different category in, in terms of both of those qualifications. So nothing is, is firm yet and ready to be put forward to town meeting. So that could be a possibility. So, thank you. And do we need to vote on this, Dr. Burnham? This is under as an action item?
Yeah. Yes, I think, I think that we're aware of the, the timeline, the meeting of the capital planning committee and, you know, have interest in moving this forward to that meeting for consideration. So.
So then would we vote on that tonight so that that can be put forward for Tuesday night?
That would be the recommendation.
Okay. So would we be looking to withdraw our previous or add this in additionally? Is that in terms of the primary, the, the air conditioning at the primary? Would we still have that there on the table and then just ask that this be additional? Or would this be a pulling back the primary from this year's capital plan?
My recommendation was to, to add it to the FY '22 plan. Knowing that if we, if, if it doesn't, if the primary school air conditioning doesn't get funded in FY '22, it would, it would just slip to '23.
Okay. Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Yeah, I just had a comment. I was just thinking of the nineteen out of nineteen ranking. And I'm just thinking that the, the perception of it is the public doesn't see it as, okay, we shouldn't be putting air conditioning in the school. And I just think maybe even just renaming this like HVAC upgrade or something, something to that effect. So it's not such a, I guess it's a bad PR move, I feel like, with naming it the air conditioning that why are schools having air conditioning? I think that's maybe a bad public PR problem.
And also looking at the, the, the cost of it, having been part of the discussions, that the cost of it, the, the only other capital projects that were in that range in terms of cost had, had, were, were significantly different and were, were DPW related. And I think it had to do with the other eighteen items sitting in this year's capital plan. They, you know, it's hard to look at a needed police cruiser or, you know, or gear that the fire department needs. It's, it's hard to, though, it's just not apples to apples. But agreed that the first name, when you look down at the paper and you see that and, and you see the cost associated, your mind immediately is, is looking at at, at other. But with that, I'll take a motion to bring this forward to the capital planning committee for consideration for the FY twenty two. Ms. Archambeau.
I would make a motion to forward the request for the fire alarm system at the primary school to the capital planning committee for their consideration for FY twenty two.
Is there a second? Ms. Kelly?
I will second that motion.
We're ready for roll call though.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly? I didn't hear Mrs. Kelly.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our FY twenty two budget update.
All right. So I will ask Mr. Cassidy to join me. And can everyone see that screen? All righty. So we wanted to give you an update relative to the FY twenty two budget. At this point, we're looking at a two point five percent increase following a conversation with the town manager. You know, the town manager is also aware that we're going to receive a health insurance premium holiday. And we will be receiving a rather large multi-year grant for COVID expenses. So we are definitely looking at a two and a half percent budget increase in the local budget. So what is still included in, in that budget? We're still looking at an assistant principal position for K five, another assistant principal position at the six twelve level. And as we had indicated prior, we're still looking at cost for that being offset by the reduction of the two current dean positions, a dean position at the middle school and a dean position at the high school, both of them stipended positions for, for current staff members, as well as a reduction of a high school guidance counselor position that's coming as a result of retirement. We are still looking to fund the social worker position or adjustment counselor position, basically a clinically licensed professional, which would be offset by the reduction of the primary school guidance counselor position. And we're still carrying right now the kindergarten teacher and paraprofessional. When I checked in on, on numbers on Friday, registrations for kindergarten are only at fifty nine, which is extremely low compared to a typical registration number at this time in a typical year. I'm not feeling very confident that that's a, an accurate number to be basing any decisions on at this point. I do think that it's a possibility that some parents are waiting to hear what next year schooling looks like before they make a decision on registering their, their kindergarten. So that information is coming soon, obviously. So I would anticipate that we might see some additional registrations pop in after that sort of announcement as to what our plans will be rolling forward. So for now, I, I, I still think that it's necessary for us to carry those positions in the budget. As I mentioned, we know that we are going to receive one month health insurance premium holiday, which, as we had indicated, will really and truly be, the, the actual amount will be dependent upon which month is the holiday. We've been told by the town manager that we will, we will be the ones to be able to make the decision, not the health insurance company, which is good news, good news, but that conversation has not yet been finalized with the town manager as to what month that we'd be looking at. And we had indicated to you the last time we were together that, you know, looking at perhaps October or November would be more optimal for the school department. Because, you know, in, in July and August, we, we aren't carrying the retirees in our account and we're also not, we don't have all of our new hires in place. So those months are some of our lowest cost months. So we do know at this point that the health insurance increase will be a zero point four seven percent. However, even that is not final yet because the town is currently reviewing the possibility of an option for vision insurance. And the insurance companies have indicated that if we move forward and offer voluntary vision plan, that the premium would actually be zero percent. I mean, the increase would be zero percent. So right now, we're not sure if, we haven't heard a confirmation from the town manager yet if we're talking about a zero percent actual increase or a point four seven percent increase. So hopefully we'll have that information soon. So we know that we're going to have approximately two hundred thousand dollars back in our budget out of the health insurance line to apply to other costs. And in thinking about this, and maybe Mr. Cassidy could, could better explain, but I'm going to take a crack at it. We really need to be thinking about FY twenty three at this same time. Because in FY twenty three, this money needs to go back into the health insurance line. So whatever we spend the money on this year, we're, we're not going to have this money to spend in FY twenty three. So we, we're taking the approach of funding things that might be one time or, or temporary to get through another school year. So as an example, until, you know, this COVID situation comes to some sort of resolution, I think it's prudent to move forward, keeping Katie McGuire in her current role as a health and safety officer for next year, which means again that we're sort of hiring a nurse to temporarily fill her middle school nursing function. So that's something that we would look to fund with this health insurance money. We're looking to partially fund the salary of the director of teaching and learning. We're looking to fund curriculum coordinator stipended positions. I've had, I've had conversation with, you know, our leadership team, a really in-depth conversation with Annika Scott, who's in that role of director of teaching and learning for this year, as well as our Title One Coordinator, Rebecca Hyde. And what we would like to be able to do is establish some curriculum leadership infrastructure in the district. So these K eight curriculum coordinator, they would be stipended positions. This would be work that would be done beyond the, the, the typical school day function, right? So in other words, not like our department heads where our department heads have a stipend, they have responsibilities, but they also have release time during the school day. They can't, they teach fewer classes as compared to other teachers at the high school level. These positions would not provide release time to the staff that would take these positions on. This would be above and beyond their full-time teaching function. But we're talking about having a curriculum leader for math K to eight, science K to eight, English literacy K to eight, social studies K to eight. We have the benefit of that curriculum leadership in social studies right now because Lisa LeBlanc, one of our middle school teachers, is actually involved in currently year two of a master teacher project where she's providing that sort of content leadership for social studies as we transition and implement the new social studies standards. And she's been working with teachers and supporting teachers in decision-making and execution of lessons, et cetera, in, in that K to eight realm currently as a master teacher. I'd like to transition those two stipended positions because the master teacher has some limitations. Only teachers who have been in the district twelve years or more are eligible to fill a, a master teacher role. I think that we have some, some very talented curriculum leaders in the district who might not meet that criteria. And I wouldn't want to box out, you know, people who, who have that passion and talent in a particular curriculum area. So we'd like to be able to fund stipended positions. We're also looking at the possibility of a K twelve model stipended position for music, art, health and PE. Again, these positions now would constitute the members of a curriculum cabinet for the district. The director of teaching and learning has a team of experts in each content area, a department head in a content area for the high school and a curriculum leader for the K eight level as well. And lastly, the, the program, the summer program that we've been talking about for this summer to provide some targeted intervention for, for kiddos who are struggling and are falling behind. And that program would be K twelve. And that program in subsequent years would, would be funded out of that multi-year grant. So the summer program, just a quick highlight here on that. At the K eight level, we're talking about creating a day that would follow along the same model as our summer school program for special education, our extended summer, our extended school year programming. So we're talking about a total of four weeks, you know, roughly a three and a half, four hour day. And at the K eight level, we're talking about targeting math literacy, including SEL, social emotional learning, as well as an enrichment opportunity to get the kids up and engaged and hands-on so that there's a little bit of fun involved for them as well during that time. At the high school level, we're talking really about credit recovery for math and English courses. Clearly, you know, our, our plan was that this year we were going to start to utilize Edgessier as a credit recovery versus in past years, we had the virtual high school model. But virtual high school didn't offer us any opportunity to offer kiddos credit recovery in the summertime. Edgessier allows us to offer a full year program to, to students like virtual high school did. But Edgessier also has a model for credit recovery in the summertime. Our kiddos had been going elsewhere to Fitchburg for credit recovery in the summer. So that was a, a plan that, that we had hoped to be able to be working this year, except then we had COVID. Clearly, the kiddos who are learning fully remote or in, in remote math classes or English classes, it doesn't make sense if they're not thriving in that online environment that we would continue to offer them an online course for credit recovery. So we're talking about physically offering math and English classes at the high school level for credit recovery as well as counseling groups that would be led by our social worker adjustment counselor staffing. And just as an aside, we are seeking additional grant funding. The Department of Ed released an opportunity for an after-school and out-of-school time quality enhancement grant. That was submitted yesterday. If we're awarded that grant, we would apply that grant to support funding the summer school program for this summer. Relative to the Esser two grant, when last, last we spoke, we weren't not, we were not clear as to who would have authority over the funding. You know, we've learned that the school department will, will have the authority over the funding. It, so we will have access to the entire amount. This money needs to be expended by the end of September twenty twenty three. And as we think about this grant as a multi-year grant, we've identified social emotional learning curriculum and supports, academic supports, summer programming for summer twenty two and twenty three, and tech supports, you know, additional technicians to support our, our devices and our teaching applications as well. So those would be the priorities for the grant. And as far as looking to next year FY twenty two, what we would be looking to fund with the grant, an additional social worker. This would be a third social worker in the district. If we can have a third social worker in the district, what we're looking at as a social worker dedicated just to the primary school that can provide support for teachers tier one, for kiddos tier two, maybe doing some social groups, but also being available to provide that tier three counseling intervention as well as interface with DCF and provide wraparound services for our families dedicated just to that one building. We would have Jamie Millet remain at the high school level. I'd like to keep her also in the role of behavioral health coordinator. We, we funded that stipend for her out of the COVID grants for this year and, and we've seen a huge benefit in having someone in that kind of oversight leadership role in the behavioral health staffing department. So this third social worker would support Turkey Hill and the middle school. Now whether, we, we'll have to take a look at caseload distribution and so on and so forth, whether or not this one Whether or not this one person can fully support Turkey Hill and the full middle school. Maybe Jamie Millet ends up picking up eighth grade through twelfth grade. That will all have to be determined based on caseload, but initially the thinking is this third social worker would support both the Turkey Hill Elementary and the Middle School. Both of those schools still will have a guidance counselor position to help support with the tier one and the tier two supports for, for kiddos in that behavioral health realm. We would be looking to fund that math specialist position that we had talked about and identified, that if we could find another funding source, that would be another priority position to fill. This position again would be supporting the K eight level. This position would help, you know, facilitate and determine, you know, pilots for new math curriculum. This person would work with Rebecca, our Title I Coordinator, to implement and review all of the iReady math data that comes out, determine with, with teachers how to interpret that data, help them determine groupings and targeted interventions that might be provided by the teacher, the classroom teacher, as well as determine those kiddos that need more impactful intervention. And those kiddos would be supported with tutors under the direction of this math specialist. And this person could also and would also provide some direct intervention service as well to students. We're also looking to fund paraprofessionals and tutors again for targeted intervention supports in math and reading, as well as some additional I T technician hours. Right now, we're still thinking that we're looking at an hourly model versus a posted part-time position or full-time position. But we will have to assess that as we go. And if the need is significant enough, we, we have to change our thinking and we may have to actually post a position that we would look to fill and fund with the grant. This, this would be the targeted staffing funded through the grant for next year. So that is what I have for an update relative to new information that's come our way and how we're thinking about the local budget, that two and a half percent budget, given what we know about the health insurance premium holiday and still what we don't know yet about the actual increase for health insurance. As well as, okay, how are we going to optimally utilize that, the monies that are now coming back into our budget as a result of the health insurance holiday? And how are we thinking about using that multi-year grant for next year and beyond? Again, those would be the, I identify those priority targets for this grant, right? It's the social emotional supports. It's the academic supports that, that really become the high priority. And, you know, we're talking about summertime programming supports as well as school year, school day supports in, in years beyond this FY twenty-two. So knowing that we have another meeting just next week, we thought it would be prudent to just wait the one more week, find out our answer if, if we can on the the actual health insurance increase. And worst case, if we don't know an answer, is it a zero? We will go ahead and formulate the budget based on the point four seven percent increase. And we will do a, you know, the budget sheets for you and we'll have a a slide presentation for you next week on the budget that we're recommending. And then it'll be presented next week. We'll have a Q and A next, next week as well. But this budget will also sit out there for public review for two weeks prior to the budget hearing that will have March seventeenth. Prior to our presenting to the finance committee on the eighteenth. So questions, concerns?
Ms. Kelly.
Dr. Burnham, with the grant proposed position for the social worker, is this, there have been discussions in the past, the social worker that's going to help with transition years in between buildings with the kids, is this the same?
So, so that's one of the things that we, we actually considered, right? Having one social worker that becomes a familiar face for students at Turkey Hill, when that familiar face is also at the middle school, again, it, it kind of gives that, oh, you, you're familiar to me. And you're the person who would help me if I'm feeling really So that's definitely a bonus. It's something to consider, assuming that the caseload is such that it, it's manageable, that potentially, let's say, our existing social worker at the middle high school level might take a caseload that is eight through twelve. Again, a familiar face in eighth grade to help with that transition and anxiety and acclimation to ninth grade would be very helpful. You know, clearly, we, we can make a deliberate effort to help students with the transition from two to three. But, but yeah, that is something that we actually did give consideration to, that that sort of support system does straddle most, most of our transition years from building to building for kids.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
You know, we, I, I think it's important that the committee knows that the administration is really keeping an eye on the following year. Especially, you know, this, it's great that we're getting this, this holiday from the insurance. It's, it's allowing us to use that money in other areas of the budget. And I think we're, we are, and I'm going to emphasize what Dr. Burnham said, which is really looking at one-time or short, short-term expenses so we can absorb that, that month of insurance back into the budget. You know, so and, you know, I, I've got numbers here. And maybe it's, it, it might even be best to hold off on, on what I'm, I'm projecting will be that gap. And, and what that gap is going to be is a month of savings plus a projected increase on, on the total amount. But, you know, it's, it, it's, it's around three hundred thousand dollars that we will have to, to look at in the recouping for the FY twenty-three budget, presuming we even get a, a two and a half percent. So I'm hoping to get the March bill before the school committee meeting. You know, I was hoping to get it tomorrow so I can run the numbers of the, of the, of the employees that are currently enrolled. So I can accurately project our savings for next year. So the, you know, I, there's a lot, there's a lot depending on this, 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 this budget for the FY twenty-two. And when I say that, it's, it's, it's a good position to be in. So, you know, we've got, we've got some, we've got some good choices here that we have to make. I don't think there's, there's a lot of difficult decisions or difficult choices that administration has to present to the school committee. So that, that's great. So it, hopefully, we're going to have some good budget meetings over the next couple of weeks. And with good debate, making sure our resources are going into the right spots. That, that's, that's good. But once again, I'm going to emphasize, we're looking, we've got one eye down, down the road on, on how we use those resources to absorb that money back. I think it's, it's, it's a critical piece. The, the town manager is aware of it. I've spoken to her about that in our, our, our dilemma here. And I think that S R two grant is going to, going to help us absorb some of that money as well. So we're setting up some foundations for our budget for the next couple of years. So I'm pleased to report that out as well. So and, and like Dr. Burnham said, it's our goal to, to get a a revised proposed budget to the school committee for next Wednesday night into the public. And just to remind the public that there is a Q and A section in, in the agenda next week. And I'll, I'll be reporting out on some the, the finance committee had some inquiries about the budget. And I want to report that out to the school committee first, be, before I send that information to the finance committee. So make sure you'll be to anticipate that information. So that's all I have, Dr. Burnham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Dr. Burnham, are you, if, if we have no further questions, are you good to move on? Okay, then I will turn it back over to you for strategy for improvement goals and progress update.
So I've, I've had an opportunity to meet with each of the members of the school committee to share with them some evidence of the work that we've been doing in the district. Work related to my, my goals that were outlined, presented and approved back in the early fall. I do appreciate that you were willing to give me some time. I really felt it was necessary to provide you some context for, for some of the things that I had shared with you so that you would have a sense of how it connected back to the work that was outlined in those goals. I, I believe, and I've, you know, reported to, to each member of the committee in, in smaller meetings, I believe that we're on track with the work that we outlined in these goals. We, we haven't seen any events that have kind of sidelined or sidetracked any of the work that we set out to accomplish for this year. So I'm, I'm very happy to be able to say that because there have been plenty of adjustments that we've been making all year long. So I'm, I'm really pleased to, to say that we've stayed the course. We've kept the focus and we're on track. I would just like to also mention that my intention is to schedule another round of meetings with each of the school committee members in early April to share with you any additional artifacts relative to the four goals, as well as to review and discuss evidence of the superintendent rubric and those standards and indicators that we identified back in the early fall would be those focus areas for evaluation for me for this year. So you can anticipate another invitation to spend some time looking at documents and having some good discussion, I hope. So I did share with members of the committee some of the artifacts that were outlined alongside the action steps for the four goals that I presented in that you all approved at the outset of this, this school year. So what types of things have I shared? The first goal really focuses on execution of the strategy for continuous improvement. So I've provided for you not only agendas and minutes from school committee meetings where those action plans were publicly reviewed. I've also provided you a version with updated notes as to the progress that we've continued to make on those action plans. And those action plans with the updated notes are also posted on the district webpage, and they are posted as well under the school committee tab, meetings and agenda link for tonight's meeting documents as well. Again, all of those documents, they, they aren't new. The notes are just updated to reflect the progress that we've been making to date. Relative to the rest of the action steps and timelines for the first goal, executing the strategy, we've really kind of completed everything up, up to this point in the timeline that was mapped out for you. When, you know, the rest of this goal, the, the timeline really brings us into August of twenty-one. So right now, you know, we've, we've executed as far as we can. We're going to continue the work. And prior to my evaluation in May, I'll be able to provide you yet another updated version of the action plans with updated notes from this point forward. So anything that I've provided to you in notes up to this point will be grayed out like all of the rest that I've previously presented. And a new set of red font notes will be provided to reflect any of the progress that we've made from this time forward to May. The second goal was around a student-centered budget, developing a student-centered budget. And, you know, that timeline, this goal is a very public goal. This happens largely in the context of our public school committee meetings. So, you know, as I had indicated, there would be agendas for school committee meetings. There would be minutes that reflected that these presentations occurred along that same timeline that we had outlined at the beginning of the year. The slide deck for the different budget presentations. So really, all of the artifacts that support this goal have already been presented to you and the public in the context of our, our meetings and our conversations around budget for FY twenty-two. And goal three is our student learning goal. And as I described back in the early fall, when we, we set these goals and adopted these goals, goal three, the student learning goal, and goal four, the professional practice goal, I described as two sides of the same coin. The work was largely the same, but one from the student perspective, the, the progress for student learning, and one from the perspective of the practitioner, the teacher and the professional practice. So largely artifacts that I've been able to give you for one goal also provide evidence of progress on the other goal. And these goals connect back to those big bucket areas of the strategy, transforming teaching and learning. If, if this isn't a year that we've transformed teaching and learning, I'm not sure what kind of year that, that would take. There's been an awful lot of that. We have been very attentive to the fact that we need to have some data as to how our students are performing. Are they demonstrating growth? Are they on target grade level? Where are they? What kinds of interventions and supports do they need? So we have, we have artifacts that we've shared that are some slide decks, presentations that, let's say, our feedback survey presentations that have been presented at school committee meetings, as well as presentations provided by our director of teaching and learning and our Title I Coordinator around the ways in which we're Around the ways in which we're supporting teachers. You're going to have an assessment report and presentation next week as well. So you'll see the data that we are looking at to determine how our students are performing. And what kinds of specific needs we we have in terms of staffing and other kinds of supports. That are needed to support our kiddos. You have examples of data reports that are generated through the I X L program that we're using. Through the I ready program that we're using. You've got sample. Meeting notes, all kinds of meeting notes. We have formulated templates. That guide things like our behavioral health support team. And you have samples of notes from that. You have sample notes, all of these redacted, by the way. So that, you know, students can't be identified. You have some sample notes from our. Teacher support team, our academic support team. You have notes from different grade level or content area data and assessment meetings. Or vertical team meetings so that you can see the work and the focus of the work that is ongoing at all grade levels. Professional development was a big piece of the goal, right? Particularly for the professional practice view of the goal. You know that we provided. Professional development for our staff for those first ten days that staff were back, but prior to arrival of our students. Because we had an abbreviated calendar year this year for days of school. You have descriptions of those workshops. You have an example of the. The flyer and the registration and the overview of the different workshops that were provided. In that joint conference that we now seem to be on an annual trend. We have that November third election day. Joint conference with our neighbors next door at North Middlesex Regional School District. We also have examples of a flyer for our tech workshops, our instructional technology workshops presented by our. Technology trainers, those are stipended teachers who who create and organize and facilitate. Those workshops as well. You know that we we created an assessment schedule for this year so that we were on a regular routine of. You know, implementing benchmark assessments. You have that breakdown of the assessment schedule by building and by grade. You have sample. Engagement coordinator logs. We put those stipended positions in engagement coordinators in each school. We actually added a second engagement coordinator at the high school level because there was clearly some need for additional support for students there based on. Our quarter one grade data. So you can see the kinds of persistence and outreach. That's being done by a number of different levels of staff. To make sure that we keep our our students engaged in their learning. You also have some faculty meeting agendas with some notes. You have agendas and notes from data team meetings. There there are a significant number. Of different types of agendas and notes. That that demonstrate hopefully the kind of work that is ongoing on so many levels. To make sure that we're doing all we can to engage our students, meet their academic needs, meet their social, emotional and mental health needs as well. Again, most of the artifacts do a dual. Service. They are evidence of both the student learning goal and the professional practice goal. And they do. They do connect back as well to the work of the strategy. I know it was a lot to have you review and I know that you haven't had an opportunity to probably fully review. Everything that I've shared with you. And as I've indicated in in the smaller meetings. Continue to to review that information that you've been provided and I'm happy to answer questions at any time. About any of the documents that we've provided for you to to review. And I'm happy as well to have a follow up meeting to discuss questions or further explain. Any of the items that we've shared with you as evidence of the progress on on the goals. So I'm not sure if you have any questions or comments at this time, but that's all I have for you for an update.
Any questions, I'll I'll put it out to the committee. I know we've all spoken personally. With Dr. Burnham last few days, but. With tonight's update, you know. Again, I didn't know if anyone, I just wanted to throw it out if there were any questions. That came up as a result. Update.
I would just like to mention that the a reminder that the student learning goal and the professional practice goal, we actually. Promoted for use district wide so that all educators in the district would adopt those goals and and. Many, many of our educators district wide have adopted those goals and on a case by case basis and consultation. With their evaluator, they may have chosen for specific reasons to. Adopt a different goal for their evaluation this year and and that's fine and allowable. There were certainly appropriate circumstances under which that might have been more prudent. But I would like to say, you know, we talk about, you know, encouraging our staff, our teachers to. Adopt team goals so that there are multiple educators working on the same goal. And this year, clearly, yes, there are many educators working on those two goals as well. But every single member of my instructional leadership team. And a few others have have adopted those two goals as team goals. So the entire leadership team is working to execute those goals and I would really like to acknowledge and thank. The members of of my leadership team who are here tonight for all of their hard work and effort and their continued focus. In this area year long, I I. Really, this is not something that you can do and accomplish on your own. It really is. A mammoth effort. To move forward in the ways in which we're moving forward and. I think that that's one of the comments that I offered to folks in my in my individual meetings. You know, if ever there was a year to. Maybe say. Really managing COVID and keeping the schools operational and keeping students and staff safe while learning. Is the primary focus and that's where we're going to put our energy. We really can't be thinking about moving the district forward in any other way. We didn't take that position. We're doing all of that and keeping everything open under extraordinary conditions that fluctuate day to day. But we're also keeping a focus on. Making changes that are impactful and move the district forward along the lines of of that strategic plan. I have a great team of very focused leaders in the district. So. Want to just thank them all again for for their hard work, effort and energy in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Much appreciated.
Thanks for the opportunity.
And now we have public comment open to anything that the school committee. Has governance over. I'm looking. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Then we will move on to reports, the athletic advisory committee.
We have not met. We plan to meet the first Monday in April.
Finance committee.
The finance committee met twice since our last meeting. The first was the eleventh of February. In and much of what I'm going to say, we've already heard from Dr. Burnham tonight. So I'll go quick. In the finance and the town manager's F Y twenty two budget, she explains that. The school number is two point five percent, but more can be funded from that due to the insurance holiday. There was a discussion about the capital plan that the sixty seven thousand dollars necessary for the. Turkey Hill envelope repairs was okayed by the capital plan committee. And there was also a report about the S O grant. The finance committee again met on the eighteenth of February. And heard presentations by the council on aging, the library and the land use committee. Their next meeting is the twenty fifth at six P M. It is an earlier time. Because they have a presentation dealing with debt. They're going to have a consultant available to discuss the possibility of handling debt for the Passios. Renovation and possible renovation of or rebuild of the Turkey Hill Elementary School. So that is on the agenda as well as some department presentations for tomorrow evening. And that would be that.
Policy subcommittee. We have not met. P T O.
The P T O met on February eighth. They are having the virtual parents night out trivia on March fifth at eight P M. The details and registration for that are on the P T O Facebook page. They're working on a virtual family night art fundraiser and there will be more details for that soon. And they are meeting next on Monday, March eighth.
School councils, the primary.
Primary school met on February eighth. We talked about how three K and K registrations have been ongoing for next year's classes. Pre K and K wrapped up some Arctic animal lessons and they're starting units on community helpers. First grade are working on, they finished up nonfiction units and reading and writing and they'll be working on story element journals. Second grade are working on nonfiction room unit, nonfiction reading unit, I could read. All about books and studying the six habitats and in math they were finishing up a unit about fact strategies and will be moving into place value. And they're planning on working on animal research projects. They just finished their midyear assessments and the I ready reports were sent home with students. The reading at level scores are continuing to go in the right direction. The rest of the document cameras have arrived and our next meeting is going to be March fifteenth and I just wanted to say congratulations again to Mr. White.
Thank you. Turkey Hill.
We haven't met, but we'll be meeting on March fifteen.
Middle school.
I got to attend the middle school on this week. They met yesterday and it was very exciting to be able to be attending that one. And more students have returned from remote instruction into the classroom. They have been identifying students who are high need and have been able to get them back into the building four days. As Dr. Burnham mentioned earlier this evening, they have approval for a powerful national position in the use of a classroom to bring more students back four days. And they will live stream from the classroom and be provided with extra support. Live streaming has been going very well. More students seem to be showing up and participating more. There is also more social interaction by doing breakout rooms between the students in the classroom and students who are remote. So that was really nice to hear. Also, since live streaming began, the percent of students attending has improved. They were averaging around ten percent of students being absent and that has improved to only been down around five percent since live streaming began. Attendance has now been taken every block for remote students and then the information is reviewed to determine if the student has attended at least half of the time to be considered present. M C A S has been shortened to one test per section. The district is still responsible for testing the fully remote students, but the testing cannot take place remotely. Mr. Santry is going to attend an administrative meeting on Thursday to get more information on that. And the next meeting date is Monday, March twenty second.
High school.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we will be meeting on Tuesday, March second.
And capital planning has not meant since our last meeting, but will be meeting again on Tuesday. Wellness advisory.
We had our first meeting of the year on February twenty third. Yes, very exciting. We went over the COVID nineteen protocol and how that's been going, how they're implementing it. We talked about how physical and mental health screenings have been suspended this year during COVID nineteen. We talked about how students previously used the health office as a safe space to decompress, which hasn't been the case during COVID nineteen and kind of. The impacts of that and where to make up for that. We talked about the mental health screenings at the L H S and how they showed that a lot of students at the high school were in need of social emotional supports. The cafeteria is prepping home cooked meals to send to students who need it instead of the previous pre prepared meals, which is really exciting for them. They started the breakfast program at school district wide for all students, which is great. Kylie's care kits have been distributed to students at their homes who for students who can't come and pick it up. And then we had a long discussion about mental health, exercise and socializing opportunities for the students. As well as providing links to places for students to get relatively cheap blue light screens or glasses. Especially since they're spending the long days streaming now. We are required to meet four times a year, so we're planning to meet once a month for the rest of the school year in order to make that requirement and our next meeting will be on March sixteenth.
Paxal. A Paxal will be meeting at the beginning of March. S E S Building Design.
The committee met last Wednesday to review cost reducing alternatives to try to reduce the cost. We plan to meet on March third and potentially a future select board meeting as well.
And lifelong learning advisory has not met since our last meeting. Topics for teacher discussion. Does anyone have a topic they? Would like to put forward for a future agenda. All right. We will be moving on to executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations not to return to public session. So we will need a roll call vote to. Close out here and adjourn this session. And a motion to do so. Can someone put that? Forward. Guess I'll take that motion to adjourn first.
Sophie Shapiro and I moved to adjourn our public session.
Is there a second? Ms. Arshambo.
I would second that motion.
All right, roll call with the time actually would be good as well.
Nine forty three. Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Leighton.
Yeah.
Mrs. Arshambo.
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand.
Yes. School Committee members, we will stay on here when everyone is done. We will, we will have this, this room for, for our executive session.
Do we also shut off the recording?
Yes.